There you are.
Here I am.
You can hear me, but you can't see me.
Where are you? Jeff, where are you?
I'm lost in space.
I sent you and Michael the minutes from the executive session.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Fran is...
Hi, Fran.
Hi, Marie. How are you?
Okay, and you?
Oh, I'm delightful. Did I change my name? Okay, I did.
Who were you before?
Well, I was Jeff before, but I had to change my name to Fran, and then I had to make sure that he became Jeff again. Hi, Jeff.
Hello.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Okay, no, go ahead.
Jeff, we want to see you.
For some reason, my camera's not working, and I can't figure out why.
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay, I'm trying to print out what I didn't print out. I'm probably going to end up asking to table the minutes, because I never looked at them, Marie, after you did.
Fran, Fran, Fran.
I know. What can I tell you? I was busy running around giving out things.
Fran, Fran, Fran.
Can you see me?
I can't see you. I can also hear your printer going.
I know, yeah, because I forgot to print stuff. What can I say? A little brain dead today.
Yeah.
So we solved all the problems in the world, Jeff. We're done for the night. See you. Bye.
Okay.
Fran?
Yes?
I just looked at the PBA contract. All employees shall serve a forty-four-zero-month probationary period from the date of hire.
I knew it well.
Wow.
I knew it was a long time, and I was always surprised at how long it was.
It's Article 13, probationary period. You can tell Larry we've looked at it.
Thank you.
That's longer than the agreement.
Yes, yes, it is. This is true. You have a noisy printer.
Sorry, there is a way for me to press a button that says to shut off the noise, but I usually print from downstairs, so I want to hear that it's running. Sorry, nobody else is here.
Jeff, do you have many people waiting to get on?
All right, now there's three.
Who are they?
Clara Thompson, Ruth Ann, and Cassie Traynor.
Ruth Ann is probably nice enough to be giving her a report.
Now, Larry, Larry apologized. He did not get a report to me in time.
Okay.
He texted me the numbers, the number of parking tickets, moving violations. And he does have one. He said he put it on my desk this evening.
That's all right. We'll forgive him. I was thinking I should go in the city and go out to lunch, find a nice little outside place.
They can't. They're only in phase one.
We know, yeah, next week or whatever. They said phase two in July for the city, but I don't know.
Okay, I'm letting Michael in. Steve is joining.
Hello, Michael. Hello, Steve.
Wait, I've got to unmute them. And Mayor Morandi is here somewhere.
Maybe I want to be muted.
Hi, Michael. How are you?
Good.
You have a secretary there, Dave?
Oh, Fran, that's not nice. Michael, you saw the minutes of the executive session?
Yes, thank you very much.
We have people using the parking lot.
Yay, good times.
Well, that'll make up our budget shortfall, right?
It won't. Our income for 2019 to 2020 was either equal to or less than the income from 2018 to 2019.
Joining the club. Joining the club.
Good point.
It's just about seven. There are 12 people waiting.
Okay, I would hold for a second. Jeff, so we're going to, you're doing the moderating or whatever you want to call it?
Yes.
Was that a yes? Okay, and we've cut the chatter, right?
I've set it up, so there's no chat.
Okay, good.
Do we have anybody on who's going to give reports, like any of the boards besides Ruth Ann?
Yes, Al is on, waiting.
Yeah, wow.
Aaron. And I believe that's it. And I guess earlier I have Larry's information. Oh, and Bob Flaherty.
Okay, I guess we'll get a roll on. We're skipping the pledge.
Let me admit, everybody.
I didn't. I set the pledge over here. I've got to...
So Jeff, is there a way I can see who's on here or who's?
The names are popping up.
I'm not seeing that.
Okay, go to the bottom of your screen. You'll see a black line. Click on Participants.
I don't see participant in mine. Oh, yes, I do. Sorry. So are we ready to go here, Jeff, I guess?
Yeah, one sec. I just want to stop video. I want to start people.
You can. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, welcome, everyone, to our monthly board meeting, our business meeting. A lot to discuss tonight. A lot of things have been happening lately. Goldspring has gotten sucked into the, into the action. A couple of things that I would like to announce and make clear if I can, which is kind of hard. First of all, I think there's a lot that all the board members like to say and need time to really get it together and and make sure things come out in the proper way. I'm talking about the recent bombardment of paste-and-cut protests regarding Officer Scott Morris, who we hired six months ago. Flyers were handed out, my understanding, on Sunday. We became aware of it then. Immediately knowing where this was going, I contacted Officer in Charge Larry Burke and also the PBA. And we discussed this. They discussed it with Officer Morris. And that was, so he was given, like, not much time at all to react. There have been some nasty posts that have shown up on Facebook, I understand, or in some of the emails regarding Mr. Morris. I don't know how much research everyone's done, if they're just cutting and pasting. There were some very good emails that were sent. They were questioning and asking, you know, about the hire, which I appreciated. Some had included information they had found, also appreciated. I think there's a few ways you can deal with things, and one of them, I think, is not making demands and forcing something. It's first getting information and, and, you know, and asking actually the people who were involved, you know, what's going on and how things were handled. Unfortunately, that's not how this happened. Unfortunately, leaflets are passed out. This is taken as gospel, and we run with it. It's kind of a mob mentality, as far as I'm concerned, type of a way to deal with it. I think it's actually something that we're actually trying to fight, you know, right now. I think the cause is about stuff like this, where, you know, you're not really doing things rationally. That said, I talked to Officer Morris this afternoon at around 3 o'clock. That's why there haven't been any comments or anything up to this point, because it's all evolved very quickly. In my discussion with Scott, who I will stand behind as a decent person, when we interviewed him, I think everyone felt that way, felt he was a decent person. He was all the information upfront regarding the incident that everyone's concerned about. We knew, you know, everything. We did our research. We did our background checks. And we felt that he wasn't on the scene, and that's one of the biggest things in our decision. So just to make everyone aware, during the process, he was totally upfront. It was the first thing that he did. It was a very long letter, which he gave the board, explaining, you know, his situation and his departure from the New York City Police Department. We voted on this after questioning, after doing background checks, and unanimously voted to hire Officer Morris. Unfortunately, in today's environment, where we're going, I don't feel there's any way, you know, that Mr. Morris could stay on. I do think that he, in his six months that he was here, I think he had, you know, a very good record. I think everyone was pleased with his performance. So I do feel it's unfortunate. Some people might think saying that a police man leaving is unfortunate. I would argue, argue a point in this case. Back to my conversation with Mr. Morris. He likes this village very much. He liked working here. He started to get a rapport with the with the Main Street merchants and with people and the residents of the village. So he was, you know, sad that it had come to this. He had to rehash everything that he endured and, you know, that he went through eight years ago. He now has children and feels, feels that by resigning, it's the best thing for the village and also the best thing for his family. We have mixed feelings on the board about accepting his resignation. We haven't gotten a hard copy. We haven't got the official resignation. This was over a phone call. But he agreed as he did, you know, he also, I want to make clear, in his initial letter to the board, when we interviewed him, he did have on there, if there was ever a time when this became a problem for the village, that he would step down, that he did not want to cause any type of problems in the village. So that said, at 3 o'clock, he did say that he would resign. He was disappointed that he couldn't stay on in the village. So that's an update, an update on Officer Morris. The second, the second topic that we started to discuss last week, I think we put Officer in Charge Larry Burke on the spot and drug him into a video. That was unfortunate. I don't think that was the way we should have handled this, but that did happen. I've talked to Larry. Steve and I had met with the PBA and Larry a few days after. Which day did we meet them, Steve?
Today.
What's that?
Yesterday.
Anyway, so we met with them. We discussed it, and they agreed that they would, that they would take the decal off of the cars. So, you know, Larry will see to that. There was Tom Zero, who is the, Officer Zero is the PBA resident. He did say that he was disappointed that what was meant as a tribute was used as a weapon to hurt people by groups that no one wants or supports. This would be referencing white supremacists. So again, they worked with us very quickly and, you know, and worked with us for the betterment of the village and the best interest of the village. So I'd like to thank them for that. So decals will be removed. Flags can be put on unless there's a big uproar about the American flag, not aware of also. So as far as I know. So the decals will go off, and Officer Morris has indicated in a phone conversation that he would resign. And those are the two big topics that I'm sure a lot of people are on here and waiting for, and I'm sure a lot of people want to gang up and want to, you know, voice an angry opinion, maybe. That's kind of the feeling that I got from emails. And some people, you know, are understandably in this environment concerned and like to know, and to those people that acted, you know, in a proper manner, I thank you. Thank you for your information and your input. Always good. That said, we'll open stuff to the public later at the end of the meeting, as we always do. So we'll get on with our, you know, our regularly scheduled meeting here. We did have an executive session before the meeting, and that started at 6:30. Was it 6:30?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, and we came out of the session about quarter of, and no decisions were made or whatever. We're discussing the employment history of an individual. Sure, you can guess who. And so we are now moving on to the agenda, like I said. So first up is a report of the Police Department. Officer Birch is on.
Dave, excuse me, do you want to do a roll call?
Oh, sorry. Yes, Michael, sorry.
Mayor Morandi?
Here.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Hi, sorry. Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Velotto?
Here.
Okay, thank you. The, I don't believe I have a police report tonight.
Jeff does.
I have the numbers from Larry. He apologized for not submitting it. There were 18 parking tickets issued last month, six moving violations. There were 61 calls for service and two arrests for criminal trespassing.
That was the voice of our clerk, Jeff Vidakovic. Thank you, Jeff.
Right.
ZB A monthly report.
Let me unmute Aaron. Okay, Aaron?
Aaron there? Would he like you?
We still have nothing to report. We haven't met. We've been talking about meeting at our next potential meeting, which would be on the 18th. And Jeff is looking at some of the options we have. We only have two public hearings that continue since our last meeting. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, have we scheduled the monthly meetings with all the boards, or have they gotten back in touch with you?
They're starting to. We're starting the process. The HDRB will meet on tomorrow. Their design standards, and then they'll pick it up after that. So they're going to be the first ones meeting via Zoom.
So for the public's information, our boards are, will have their own, they'll have a Zoom account. The meetings will be on Zoom, so you can all tune into those. We gave the, Jeff got all the information, got everything together, so it's just a matter of them coordinating and coming up. So if you're interested or want to have a project that's on hold or wants to get moving, contact Jeff, and he'll tell you where we're at with all the different boards.
A question. I thought that public meetings, public hearings, were not going to be conducted yet.
I agree. Are there any that are scheduled?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think we have public hearings on that. I don't know how, we'd have to, we have to, we need to discuss that a little further.
I have an email into Wade Patrano asking him about the status of the executive order for canceling all public hearings. So as soon as Wade gets back to me, I'll give you an update.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, is the, where are we here? Let me turn this page up, so I know where I'm at. Was the recreation, we didn't have anything from them? Nothing from planning?
Ruth Ann is on the call.
Oh, okay. Ruth Ann, anything from?
Let me unmute her. Let me find her.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can't hear you very well.
Recreation Commission has no new business, just the continuing business in regards to the ticket events, which I think we could talk about later on in the agenda under the Putnam Wine and Food Festival. So I'll be prepared to discuss that at that time when it comes up on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Town of Phillips Town, Bob, I think you're on.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody. I don't know why I'm not on audio or visual for some reason, but that's okay. Good to see everybody again. It's been a few months since I've reported. I did send my reports every single month, but I'd like to say unfortunately, what just transpired in the village, it's unfortunate, but I think you guys did the right thing, and that's the way things go, unfortunately. So glad to be part of this agenda again. Okay, as I've indicated the last several months, our town hall has remained open, appointment only. Our building department has been open, and we had a real good, busy month with our building department. To be honest, we collected almost over $20,000 this past month in our building department. So we've remained open, and we're giving everyone the services that they deserve. And we appreciate everyone's patience as we move forward with this. We did, correction for resolution that we passed last month on MS4. I did have a mistake on that, unfortunately. I think I had the 2019. It's the resolution is from March 10, 2020, to March 9, 2021. So I appreciate you pointing that out to me. So hopefully that's the correction that you were looking for, and we should be good to go. As I've indicated the last several months, our town hall is under renovations. We're making very good progress. It's, right now, we've done, almost, almost the whole entire inside is pretty close to complete it. All the cabling, wiring, electrical has been done. The sheetrock is completed. We're at a point now where we're trying to pick out colors for painting and so forth for all of our rooms. The AV and data cabling has all been completed. It's just still needs to be terminated, and we still need to do some AV work. That's how we're going to move forward, how we're going to do everything. But we're all completed. We should be in a pretty good place for AV. We did a mock-up, a mock-up of the siding last week. To be honest, between me, Johnny, and Richard, we're not too happy with the mock-up that they came with, so they got to come up with a better solution right now. We're deciding in the coins meet, it's just, just doesn't look right. So we told them that already. Hopefully they'll come up with a better solution, but right now, we're not happy with the way that came out. We approved a few change orders for the town hall as well, and the new windows are in the progress of being installed. As indicated last month, we're moving forward with our new highway building department up on Fishville Road. As indicated last month, too, we rented two garages from, in Nelsonville there. And we moved all our necessary maintenance equipment that needs to be performed on a day-to-day basis is down there in Nelsonville now, and whatever trucks need to be, trucks and equipment that needs to be maintained will be done at that location. As indicated also over the last several months, we're still offering $100 food cards to people who need them. We're also offering $100 each month to Drug World. Exactly, the food town cards are available to anyone, no questions asked. Just call the town hall, and you're eligible for $100 each week. And we decided in the best interest of our, of our children and our staff at the Phillips Town Recreation Center, that we did decide to cancel recreation for the summer. It's unfortunate, but we all agreed it was probably the best thing for everyone involved. I'm sure there's a lot of people, a lot of disappointed parents out there with all the children been home for the last several months. They're probably looking for some type of relief, but unfortunately, we felt that in the best interest of everybody was a good decision not to have the camps. We passed a resolution supporting emergency first responders in the Privacy Protection Act. I just also want to remind everybody that the Clinton 2020 census, and we changed our July monthly meeting from July 2 to July 9. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I saw the windows that we're in, and they look great, the upper ones. Looks good. Hey, Jeff?
Yeah, the windows look really nice. And, you know, one thing we were joking about the other day is we're getting rid of the plastic that was inside the town hall. So that's gone away. So we don't have those drafts anymore. So they look really nice. Thank you.
Yeah, they do. Is there a way that I can see the board all the time and just one other person when they come on?
If you go to the left, you probably see screen two of two. Flip over to screen one of two and you should have all the board members.
What is that? Where am I looking?
On your left, you should, there might be an arrow that says one of two or two of two. You want to flip it over to?
Yeah, I don't see that.
Are you on speaker view?
Am I on speaker view? I have no idea.
Only when you talk that that comes up. But you should be able to see everybody on the tile. I see everybody.
Yeah.
In like the bridge, both type of thing.
Where is my camera gear?
Marie's cut off.
Okay, hold on. Can you hear us, Marie?
What?
Okay.
I lost Dave.
Yeah, we lost Dave.
He's there, but no picture.
What's that?
We lost your face.
Yeah, hold on. Review.
Al is on.
Good evening, everybody. So the the report that we have today is really a summary of everything since February. In February, we had two meetings, went over 22 Parrot Street and 16 Orchard Street and Five Cedar Street. And then in March, we had our regular monthly meeting on March 11. Went over 192 Main Street and 24 Parsonage Street. In addition to that, the the review board continued working on its design standards. We reached out to Kirsten Heimke of K H Creative, who will be doing the graphic work, pulling this together. We had talked with Steve Tilly's group and they were not, would not be able to finish the document for the the price that are the the dollar amounts that we still had. But Kirsten offered to do it for the remaining budget. So we went ahead and reached out to her and and we're going to have her work with us on finishing the document. Sean Conway of our board has been very active as far as taking photographs of buildings and other things for the design standards. And so that's moving ahead. And that's the meeting that we're having tomorrow has to do with the design standards primarily. Also during the month of February, board member Carolyn Duchan resigned. She quit her, her seat. She gave up her seat. And we were lucky enough to have somebody who was very qualified. And the Village Board of Trustees appointed Mr. Lloyd de Bressay to the board. And so we have a full complement now. After the monthly meeting in March 11, we ceased having meetings based on the direction that we got. And we're scheduled to get started again tomorrow. So that's it.
Sealed. Give my best a candy.
Yeah, well.
Thanks, Al.
Fire Department?
Yes. Cold Spring Fire Company, alarms for May, six, two EMS assists, one mutual aid, two wires down, and one motor vehicle accident with a car and an animal. And they're still waiting to, for us to act on the mold in the firehouse wall. That's it. Respectfully, Tom Amerigan, chief.
Thank you. Tree Advisory? Nothing?
I don't think anybody's on.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce?
I don't see them.
Okay, Water Waste Water?
I don't think Matt is on other than the reports he submitted.
Okay. Let's see, Water Department Monthly Operations Report. Let's see what's the reservoir is 100% capacity. It bacteria lab tests, all routine bacteriological monthly samples, all were found in good standing. Second bullet point, Casco D E P, Beatty and Watson surveying conducted and report receiving and report received on March 2. Our clerk has had reached out to D E P on 510. No updates since emailing. The wastewater department, let's see, what would make sense to everyone? I'll just go the Campbell Avenue Pump Station Alarm Panel. The panel of PCS pump and process installed the new alarm panel on Wednesday, May 20. All alarms tested and working except pump failure alarms, which will need the electrical contractors upgrade to ones with auxiliary outputs to enable these alarms. The manhole monitor was relinquished to the Highway Department and was installed at the Lower Main Estuary on Thursday, 521. Building Department, new building permits, five dumpster permits, three record searches completed, four referrals generated, H D R B, two applications and permit fees collected $500, record search fees collected $300, other fees $90, for a total of $890. Highway, Bugsy on or not?
No, he's not.
Okay. For the month of May, we installed a new pump and alarm system at the lower Main Street Estuary. Wofford Electric updated the wiring for the pump and alarm. We spread eight yards of topsoil at McCombles Park and seeded it. We put the flags out, trimmed saplings along one terrace, removed the old lockers from the Police Department and brought in new ones, repaired cloggy subway drain. We installed new rear tires on the backhoe and replaced the spring on the zero turn. Also have been busy on Main Street repairing curbs and putting the bricks in, the pavers along the north side from between Garden Street and the, let's see, Ming Moon. So they've been working on that. Also, a tree was removed in front of Hudson Hills, a dead tree, a small one. I talked to Jen Sorek and we decided not to replace it. And so that's being, if it hasn't been already, pavers are put in that small spot, which should help with the flow of traffic. Justice Report, let's see, tentative court calendar continued upon courts reopening. I think anyone, I'm not going to read there, is a tentative calendar here. If people are interested or need that, I think they should contact Jeff or contact the court clerk with the new dates and times. Is that posted on our Facebook or on our website?
It's on our website.
What's that?
Yeah, their calendars on our website.
Okay. So for the monthly report from the Justice Court, we have fines, forfeited bales and civil penalties at $325, parking tickets at $685, mandatory state surcharges $372, for a total of $1,382. Report of the mayor and Boards of Trustees. We'll be opening up, well, the docks and River, Dockside Park and the Riverfront Park are open or, and they'll be opened going forward unless we, unless there's a resurgence. So everything is open now. Mayor's Park is open, the parking in front of Mayor, Long Parrot, Mayor's Park is open, municipal market parking lot is open. And Tots Park is the only park that we're going to keep closed for now and to see, see how things follow up because of the way of sanitizing all of the equipment in there. So the only park that isn't open at this point will be Tots Park until we, till further notice. Was contacted by Hal Dane today and they will be removing the cones in front of the fields across from the football field. So that'll all be open also. I think we've reached phase two. And so restaurants are able to now serve outside. We would ask all the restaurant owners to please, if you're using or would like to use our sidewalks, you have to contact us. Frank has forms and knows knows the proceedings, procedures for it. But you need to, you know, if you want to serve alcohol out there or you want to use the sidewalks, you need to contact Village Hall and we'll give you guidance on that. Be glad to stop by and go over things with you. So that's open. Retail will be open. So this weekend, retail is open and it'll be up to the owners to really to, they can require masks. They need to kind, you know, monitor the number of people in their stores. So welcome back. Hopefully, I don't think there'll be any problem having people back in the village. The village was full when the shops weren't really open. So good luck to everyone. What we can, whatever we can do, we'll try to help you. Please contact us and and we'll see what we can do on that. That's all I have. And everyone else?
I'm good.
Go ahead, Fran.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
That's it? No?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Oh, I've been, I've been using my free time to pour over more of that information about the development of a Human Rights Commission for Cold Spring. And since Bob Flaherty is here, I was going to ask, Bob, are you there? I guess, I guess not. Yeah, Bob, I just wanted to know, was there something that that the Phillips Town Board joined in or established as far as a Humans Rights Commission?
We talked about that, but we never made a motion on it at all whatsoever. With the resolution, it was discussed, but we never really moved forward with it. It was discussed back in, I think, January or February. And that's as far as it got. We have not done anything formally to pass a resolution.
Okay, thanks. So I'm, I'm still plowing through this mountain of documentation that I was sent by Mr. Hire. And hopefully, you know, I think maybe the time might be right for us to collaboratively work with Phillips Town, maybe in establishing something like that here.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
When I have something more concrete, I'll bring it. But I just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up and maybe people start thinking about it.
Okay, thank you. Steve, anything?
Nope, I have nothing. I enjoyed putting all the signs on the poles yesterday with the mayor and we spray painted the sidewalks and starting to see what happens this weekend.
We'll see how far we get. We made it to Campbell Avenue today.
Okay, I can help you tomorrow a little bit.
All right. I was there at 6:30. So I doubt I'll see you. I have to work actually. So I'm there early. Marie, anything? Is that a note?
That is correct. It's a note.
Okay, thank you. Lex, old business. We've already discussed the police vehicle decals. We've kind of touched on update on reopening of businesses. Anyone else have anything to say about the reopening? No? Okay.
Okay, the only, the only thing I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, with the restaurants serving outside, the guidelines do specifically say that restaurants, let me read this. Restaurants must ensure an indoor capacity to accommodate patrons who may need to enter or exit through the indoor space to assess outdoor seating, restrooms or payment location and allow such access in aggressive and socially distanced matters. So restaurants can't open indoors only to let people pass through or to use the restrooms or to pay their bills, but not to sit there. That's all.
Okay. We also passed the resolution, which we handed out, you know, or will be reminding the merchants on Main Street that, you know, we're not allowing or permitting for the time being, sandwich boards or or any other items on sidewalk. If you feel like there's a place where something goes, it's not going to cause any kind of, you know, breakup or any kind of pedestrian clog, please let us let us know. We'll check it out and work with you on that. But as the resolution stated, there is, there's nothing allowed on the streets until further notice. Okay, let's see, correspondence, we have Putnam Wine and Food Fest. I believe it's a request for September. Is that right?
Yeah, September 5th and 6th.
And remind me, is that the dates we had scheduled for our event?
I believe it is.
Yes.
The 6th, yes.
Okay, so that's problematic. I think what we said at the last meeting that we were going to reevaluate, reevaluate the, you know, the events, the larger events in the middle of July to August.
Yes.
And then, and go on from there. We didn't want anyone to commit to dates and then have us say, no, you can't have it at, you know, the last, what would be your last minute or after you've already made arrangements. So moving forward, we are not accepting any, you know, we will not be approving any, any large events. And we will reevaluate in mid-July and see where things stand, see how things are opened up. They seem to be changing daily. So maybe the events will be able to happen. What we don't want is to say that you can have an event and then, and then have to cancel and then feel like we're the ones that are responsible for that. So if you'd like to request dates, I guess you can do that. But there is, you know, a good chance that we will not be approving any. We will reevaluate.
Does that go true still with the September event? It was supposed to be in July 4 for the village?
The community day is on hold too. You know, we'll, we'll look at that the middle of July and along with any other, any other events, along with C Street too, and see where we're at.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else want to comment on that? Okay, moving along, we're down to approval of bills.
I'm going to leave that to Fran since she covered for me today, I believe.
I did. I'm going to take the data off of the minutes since I don't have the pile with me. So I'm going to move, make a motion to approve batch number 5598 in the amount of $34,567.15.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Let's see. Is there anything else from the board or whatever before we get into public comment?
We've got a minute.
Did I miss something? So second page. Where are we here?
You have minutes.
I got it. Sorry. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 2, 2020.
I second.
Can I ask that that be tabled? Unfortunately, I'm sorry, I did not look at them. I did discuss some with Marie, but never, Jeff's going to yell at me, but I didn't have a chance to go through the whole thing. Can we table that till next time?
Sure. Motion to table?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now's the, we'll get to the, some public comments. First, just some, some rules here. You need to state your name and your, and your address, where you live. So we know where. So we know where, where you're located and who we were speaking to for the record. We will limit it to a couple of minutes, there are a number of people, I don't know how many people want to speak. But if they do, like to, hopefully if you can keep it concise, if you can keep it together with us, that would be appreciated. And Jeff will be punching people in or however you want.
Yeah, no one has raised their hand to speak, so.
Okay, oh, there's a hand.
There's a hand. All right, Tara, Tara Vamos?
Hi, my name is Tara Vamos, I live at 6 Rock Street. And I am really glad that the decals are being removed from the police cars. And I'm also glad that the officer was dismissed and I just want to thank the person that brought that to my attention and I really want to thank everybody that came on. I know that I've seen a lot of college students, high school students, plus a ton of other people in the community. And I'm, I'm really glad that everybody's showing up to pay attention to the issues. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Someone has something to say.
I was going to say, it's not my dog for a change.
Sorry.
Is there, what, what did he have, can you interpret what, what, what did he have to say? Is anyone else on, if not?
There's no other hands raised.
Okay, I'll make a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, a comment, a comment?
Yes.
And Tara, you said that the officer was dismissed, he resigned.
Actually.
Who is that?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Uh, no, you're, you're on, we can hear you.
Tara, Tara is still on.
Actually, I have two other comments. One is, I wish that the link for the meetings was put more prominently on the webpage. I had to do some digging, so I actually missed all but the last sentence of what Dave said. So I'm not surprised that I missed the exact subtlety of what happened besides that the officer was leaving. So if you could please move that link for the meeting to somewhere that's easier to find than bring it in the agenda, it would be fantastic. Or if there was an indication to look at the agenda to find the Zoom link, that would be great.
Well done, thank you.
Yeah, distinction appreciated.
I think I see one more hand.
Okay. Okay, Jenna Herskowitz?
I think you guys can elbow my hand now, but Jenna Herskowitz, 62 Main Street. I want to echo what Tara said and many of our friends in the community, I imagine, will be happy that this is being resolved and thank you for your efforts. And then I also want to go to like the more mundane, I mean, it's hardly, it must be a pandemic, but my, I'm grateful to see your efforts and we're going to see how we do with the crowds, you know, where we all know. But I wanted to raise, that a concern I have is still benches on Main Street as there's a bench just a few feet from the only door that I have to leave my home. And I've, you know, just for weeks watched groups sitting on it, eating and, and, you know, generally enjoying themselves, but often eating their takeout in large, you know, in large number and for long periods of time. So it's, it's, it's hard to like feel particularly comfortable exiting my home. And I'm not the only person who lives at this door, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, one thing with the dock and the Riverfront open, I, I think more people will be moving down there to, to eat. But keep us apprised of what's going on there and, you know, if we have to and it's causing concern, we can move the bench somewhere else or move it all together, so.
Yes, thank you, I was hoping we might think about that as time goes on, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, now make another motion to adjourn.
I will second again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, take care, be safe and see you in a few weeks, or are we meeting next week?
No. Next week is the code.
Code update.
The code update and since we, we don't accept public comment during that, during that meeting, it'll probably be a closed Zoom session. The next meeting would be the 23rd.
Okay. All right, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you Dave.
Bye.
Take care Lynn, be, be good.
Thank you very much.
Yes, feel better.
Thanks all. Be safe out there.